Call the Planning Commission work session for October 19th in order. We'll start with the invocation led by Ms. Alice and the pledge by Steve. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the travel and mercies that we have arrived here safely. We ask that you will be with us to arrive back at our homes safe and sound, and that everything we do will be for the betterment of Buckingham in our thoughts, words, and deeds. In your son's name, we ask these things. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
We have seven of eight, so we do have a quorum. Adoption of the agenda.
So move.
So. Right by hand. Unanimous. Old business. Reason we've come here tonight is to have a little more in-depth discussion about the zoning ordinance and its relationship to core sampling. I guess I'll start just by making a statement here. When people in the United States, state of Virginia included, buy real estate, they gain certain rights. Those rights are possession, control, exclusion, enjoyment, and disposition. Now, the biggest question I have about this whole thing is, do the lack of zoning restrictions trump property rights? The only person I know to look to for an answer on this one is EM. But the lack of... Well, if that's the law, then... Well, is there any need in talking about this anymore?
Well, I think so, in my opinion, because we sort of got two things. We got the text amendment first, right? Don't we have to... We set it up as two different things? I mean, two different processes?
The process from September 21st was that Planning Commission made a motion to hold a joint public hearing with the Board of Supervisors. Reason that the public hearing was being held was to consider an amendment to the text ordinance, to the zoning ordinance, for a text amendment to the list of special uses, A-1 zoning district, to possibly add core sampling for commercial use.
Right.
Public hearings for, so correcting for the second part.
The second part was to require if they did it, a special use permit, right? We're doing the text amendment to allow it in agricultural districts.
That you would be voting on it, hearing public comment, and deciding if you would be the zoning ordinance to include under special uses in A-1 the core sampling. If that were the case, any company interested in actually pursuing this type of activity at that point would have to apply for the special use permit. But we have no applications for a special use permit for this purpose in, at all, because we do not have this purpose, this use, by default, in our zoning ordinance.
Correct. So it's really a two-part process, is the way I interpret it.
It would, it would be if the...
In other words, you could do the text amendment for agriculture to allow this, but then you could make an alternative versus a special use permit requirement if somebody wanted to do it. Correct? Am I reading?
If you're talking... Okay, so let's go back to the second part of that. If you're discussing an alternative to this, so if this were presented for public hearing in a joint meeting for the Planning Commission and the Board, and both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors voted against the text amendment, then we're back to exactly square one where we started, because this is still a prohibited activity, not a permitted activity.
Right.
So you need some, one way or the other.
One way or the other, I understand it, but that's what I'm getting at. I have no problem allowing it, making the text amendment. I, after thinking about it, I do have some reservations in regards to requiring a special use permit. And discuss reading information and all. I'm not so sure it wouldn't be better to require something a little bit simpler, easier for the company and the landowner. And this sort of dovetails into what Chairman Bo was saying, is about property rights. You sort of, if you're just doing increments core samples, I mean, they're very minimum intrusive, and they're required to concrete them in and all soon as they pull out. And I also understand that some of these leases that they enter into with these properties, that they may or may not even do, do, that sometimes they never get around to doing them because it wants to do the basic research, it doesn't pay to do that.
Also, these people are not going to run a business. And when we're talking about zoning, we're usually talking about a business that's going to be out here for years. These people come in, they do their sampling, and they get out. It, it's really no different than some large company wants to come into Buckingham to manufacture gidgets, and they send a team into town and they rent a room from a church, and they start interviewing people to see if Buckingham has the number of people who are educated enough to run these machines. We certainly wouldn't send somebody down to shut them down, and that's all they're doing is research.
Would it be feasible, Nikki, to have a register?
I think we touched on that, the, the permit process. Mr. Wright, was there, there was an issue with requiring a permit? I can't remember what discussion was around that. Had something to do with state code unless I'm forgetting what the details were? For core sampling? Requiring the, I guess, the company, the commercial company to come forward and register, which we don't require here in the county, and then for them to pay a permit fee to do this? But there was... Prohibited versus a permitted activity? Correct, and then if, I think also to the point of Mr. Bickford, so as I would visit the Health Department to pay a well-inseptic permit fee? Because that is permitted or not permitted, I think that's what he's getting to. If this company were to come forward, any company came forward, could they pay a X number dollar permit fee and move forward? I know this comes back to, we're still at a prohibited activity. Correct?
Well, I don't know that it's necessary to pay the fee. I'm just suggesting that if they, they enter into a lease with, all right, they own this piece of property, they own it themselves, the company does. They started there on their own property. They then entered into a lease with a warehouse or on theirs. In some research, it looks like some of the companies, what they do, or some of the counties, I should say, they have a register. In other words, when they go to, when they start on one property and they then expand to another one, that they have to come to either the zoning administrator or county administrator and say, okay, we've entered into a lease with this landowner and all the details, tax and all. And I, you know, some look like they had a duration, a length of time that they could, that lease was. But that would then allow them to do the increment samples or not on that piece of property that they entered into the lease to. That's, that's my question, rather than requiring every time they enter into a lease with another piece of property, they're required to do a special use permit. If the county required a registrar that was immediately following they entered into this lease before they do anything on that property, far as increments core sampling, they have to come to a representative of the county, either, in our case, either Nikki or Becky Carter, and say, we've entered into this lease, and before they can do anything. Is that, I guess, one, is it legal? And two, does it protect the county?
There's got to be other zonings or businesses that are taking place that only last for a couple of weeks and then they're gone. We're not zoning those. What are, what are some of them? There's got to be others.
Why can't you zone for permitted use with the part owner that says they have to register before they do any drilling?
I don't have a problem with registering. I really don't.
No.
I just have a problem with making somebody go through four or five months of...
Well, I'm not talking about the special use. I'm talking about the permitted side, so you won't have to go through all that.
Right. In other words, it's by right with...
By right.
With the...
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that one.
And then they have to come to see Nikki and fill out all the paperwork of who they are, where they're drilling, and what they're doing, and...
How long they gonna be doing it?
Exactly.
Be gone.
And then let us know what the fan.
Well, let me play devil's advocate for just a moment. So what's on the table is to consider an amendment to add it as a special use. That's what the public hearing will be scheduled for.
Right.
That special use permit application, if you decide if the Governing Boards of Buckingham decide to implement this amendment, that would allow us the chance to have an application with a narrative, so that we could understand what their, the scope of their project is. If we listed it as a permitted use and they come, so we're going to say that we require it for them to come in and talk to me and tell me what they're going to do. What if when they come in, I say, is it just going to be enough review by myself and Becky? What if we find out that they're doing something that we didn't quite understand, but I'm, they've signed their permit and I've granted it, and then we have a problem? I know that when we have any type of business or activity that's not permitted in a zoning district and we've allowed it as a special use permit, it allows our governing boards to have that extra careful attention to the detail and what these companies are actually trying to do. And we've held public hearing and we've opened it up to the citizens of this county to, to comment on this as well. And then, of course, if, if they, if we listed it as a permitted use and that's all they see in the zoning ordinance, and it says, oh, by the way, come fill out an application, am I ever going to see that company for filling out an application?
Are you going to what?
Am I ever going to see that company to come in and fill out an application? Because they're going to say, well, it's permitted. Do I really need to fill out this permit for an application?
Permitted with, with registration.
Do we have anything else in a permitted use where we have a condition tied to it?
Right, if we, so these people that came here and talked to us, obviously, they have been here for months, had not gotten a ton of noise complaints, traffic. If we make it permitted, how do we then control noise, traffic, the hours that they do it?
Exactly.
And, and we've talked about technique last time. These people have been doing core sampling as we understand it.
And we, and none of us here, no offense to anyone, and I'm talking directly to myself, we are not mining and mineral experts. And we've had absolutely no opportunity, if it were to be allowed by a special use permit, because as it is now, it is, it's a prohibited activity, period. There's no use specified in our zoning ordinance. But the special use permit would allow a minimum of four months of review by governing bodies in the county, to make sure that we understand this narrative. If we don't understand it, then we bring in experts. We delay a decision and bring it back again in another month's meeting.
But it's not mining. You said mining. This is only core drilling.
It's core, I apologize if I...
Well, determine whether you're mining. If you're mining, then you, we've already got a special use permit where they have to come back and do all the four months.
I mean, it does not automatically go from core sampling...
Core sampling for commercial use.
Core sampling's totally different.
Does not automatically go from core sampling to running a mine. They got to come in and get zoned for that boy.
Totally.
But if they're here for three years with 10 different rigs, making noise at all sort of the night, and we've permitted it, then what?
Then when the zoning complaints come in, I can let them know it's permitted, not to contact my office anymore.
Say that again?
If it is permitted, and we have complaints for people coming in because they're drilling at all hours of the night, or during the day, or there's lots of traffic with the rigs coming in and out, if they call in a complaint, I can let them know what their activity is for the core sampling is permitted, and there's no need to contact me about it, because it's a permitted activity.
We still have noise ordinance, so they can't be drilling late at night.
If it's after 11:00 PM, we can send the sheriff's office.
That's right.
But there's nothing further I can do past a noise ordinance.
Well, you know, we sat up here as a commission and decided that we were going to try to encourage business to come into Buckingham County. If you're going to run away their prospectors, how in the world do you expect the business to come?
Do you really feel that it's running off prospectors or giving you the opportunity to understand the business through a written narrative and what their program truly is about?
I feel that this whole thing is simply ridiculous. You're talking about a company that wants to come in here and drill, what was it, 24 holes they dug last time, over a, what, two-month period?
It was 27 holes in approximately four years. But again, I don't have any information from the company telling me if that's all they've done.
But you also don't have four years' worth of complaints on this, until somebody trespassed onto that property and went up there, which was a violation of man's property rights, zoning ordinance or no zoning ordinance. That was a violation.
However, it came to be for someone to notice that. When I followed through with the investigation of this complaint, I contacted the companies necessary and gained access by having two representatives from that company to take me, and also permission the first time to enter that property to see the drilling rig. Either way, it came to the attention of this office, and there is a, nothing but a prohibited activity for this.
Because this falls under mining, could you just specify mining in general?
Yeah.
You mean every business?
I come back with the question there, who's going to enforce that one? You're going to start getting phone calls to Nikki, oh, so-and-so's my next-door neighbor. I saw him sell a typewriter the other night. Somebody came last week and bought two typewriters. I mean, who's going to enforce it? Yeah. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not against registering businesses, but it's unfair unless everybody registers. This whole thing is almost to the point of being absurd. I've been sitting up here, I don't know, 10, 12 years now, and I've never heard of a case like this before. Have any of the rest of y'all?
Uh-uh.
No.
And to me, we're making a mountain out of a molehill here.
Well, I'll make a motion there. I'll make a motion if we put it back to a permitted use with a register connected to it, that you have to register if you want to do any core drilling. Y'all want to add any more to it, add it.
Do I have a second?
Tonight is a discussion. We already, the Planning Commission has already moved to hold a public hearing, a joint public hearing in regard to...
You missed that.
We did miss it.
That's right.
And then we missed it because I neglected to recess, recess to reconvene on a procedural matter, and then there was no date set at the Board of Supervisors meeting.
That's right.
So, Mr. Wright, does that mean we meet again together to decide on a date? But if the terms are still there, can that be negated? Public hearing. So, Mr. Allen's, if his motion carries through and there's a second, would there then be two public hearings if they send this to the Board of Supervisors? So if they make the motion tonight and second it to add it to a permitted use, and then let's say we held a public meet, a public hearing in November for the Planning Commission for this, and then there's another public hearing held for the, the first one, I mean, we, we can't have, are we going to have two public hearings to do two different things?
No.
It goes away?
To me, this is a change from the special use back to a permitted use.
Would a by right make it any easier?
Sure. They come up, the biggest thing they'd have to do is register and tell everybody where they're going, who they are, and what, what they'd be drilling for, or whatever. Anything you want to put on that paper, form to register. That way you know what's going on. And what I've understood, it's, it's legal through the state for, for them to drill. There ain't alcohol. But we got zoning, and they need something in zoning to say it's okay? So my part would be, if you want to, you want to go on and give your people the right to do it, say it's permitted, say you have to come up here and register your name, address, who you are, who, what land you're on. And to me, I'd like to see what you found when you get to. Have all that on that, but... That's where I stand, and that was my motion.
Yes.
So you're talking more or less going back and having at the beginning of your A-1 to say, all businesses must register? Yeah. That's, that's what I had in mind. I didn't know if I was saying what you think.
So, Mr. Wright, you're saying we can put a register? We can establish a register and the criteria or specifications that we want on that? You think, Karen? You think you can, right?
Okay.
That would give you more time to investigate to Nope, I don't have a problem with that.
Reasonable.
Makes sense.
Anybody have a problem with it?
I'll put my motion on hold then. Table it then. A1, right.
A1.
A1, and it's got to have reg, got to be a register. Exactly.
I assume, Mr. Wright, in your research, you will, to go back to Nikki's points, there will be some conditions that will help protect the county from, no, in other words, what she brought up is very valid, that it could be a company that registers, but then doesn't come, every time they enter into a lease with another landowner, they don't come and tell. Okay.
Because most time, you don't have nobody checking behind all these people.
I agree, I'm, I'm
So the only time you get a check on it is when there's a complaint.
And you could, I assume, have specifications on duration of the Right, okay. Hmm, okay. Thank you. Yes, we, so Dana, you've tabled your motion until Monday?
Yeah, we'll table it to Monday and see what Mr. Wright comes back with.
Anybody else have any other thoughts on this matter? I don't think you can talk.
On, on this board?
Yes, this is a work session for the board. Well, we'll be glad to listen to it Monday night if they want to come talk. That's a regular planning commission meeting, whether it's time scheduled for it. Now, I think that this maybe is the beginning of a long line of things that are going to start happening around here. With the technology that's out there today, who knows what's going to come into town next? I mean, what are we going to do when somebody comes in and wants to open up a drone port? There's a whole lot of stuff that zoning ordinance just don't cover today. But if we take the rule that if it's not listed, it's illegal, then fine, but I, I think there's a whole lot of technology out there today that's going to work its way to the surface, and I'm not sure we're prepared for it with the current zoning ordinance.
Well, solar is a prime example, Mr. Chairman, if you
Yeah.
I mean, where you had to adapt your zoning ordinance to comply with the solar development, and I don't think any of us can envision what might be coming forward, so the question always of planners and commissions and the board is deciding on whether, what the activity is, whether it's in a proper place for the county, and that pulls back into your comprehensive plan as to the type of activities you want to see develop in certain parts of the county. I think your observation is very astute and right on point, but, so it'll always be a changing landscape, literally.
Any other comments from the commission? Thoughts? Let's move on to commission matters. Anybody have any? Then I guess we will move for adjournment. Do we have a second? Vote? Ananas, we are adjourned.